To the. Excellent. Uh, welcome to the April tenth meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, our first order of business is review of the meeting minutes from our March thirteenth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Nope.
Yeah. Uh, nineteen twenty-six instead of twenty-three on the, on packet page three. Um, and then about two-thirds of the way down. Um, does Mr. Booker question why the retaining wall and chain link fence were not, it should be repaired as they are located on the property.
Oh, instead of replaced?
Yeah, not to be replaced, but not repaired. And then, um, on packet page four. Halfway down. Says, Mr. Booker stated, the, whatever, um, but anyway, Mr. Booker stated, uh, the reconstruction cannot exceed fifty percent of the appraised replacement cost. That's what that should be. And then continue with the structure will be like new. Cause it's the appraised, uh, fifty percent of the appraised. So cross out value of the property will likely increase more than fifty percent.
You're saying the reconstruction would likely be more than fifty percent?
Of, of, of the appraised value of the, um, of the structure. That's what the ordinance state.
Gotcha.
And then packet page seven. I'm just using my, uh, ninth grade, uh, English grammar class. Uh, the first paragraph there, um, I think I know what they're trying to say, we were trying to say there, but, um, I think, uh, no change, um, halfway through the paragraph. I think it should say just no changes to the front footprint of the building and no modifications to the roof lying along, along the west and south lot lines are proposed. And then that's it. And that, and that way, um, yeah, that, that one. And, uh, and then the next sentence, at the front of the house, a dormer is proposed and at the rear, a gable roof is proposed, which will also help to add a second bathroom, get rid of proposing to replace the hip roof width. Uh, the next, um, paragraph there that says, Mr. Nelson. It's a third, third set, or third line in there, a hundred and seventy square feet of living space with changes, not which, and it says just which changes. I appreciate you guys doing minutes because minutes are difficult. I'm not being critical. Um, and then, uh, I think Mr. Booker halfway down, Mr. Booker stated, I think he doesn't belong in there, can cross that out. While the house is non-conforming, it seems different than previous case. And then, um, the next, the next paragraph, Vice Chair Schmidt stated the parcel is non-conforming. No, sorry, that's fine. Along with. That's it.
Were you able to get all that? Perfect. Any other changes or corrections? All, all of those in favor of adopting the minutes of our March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting as amended? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. We have meeting minutes. All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing for three, three, six, three Lake Shore Drive. We'll go ahead and open that public hearing. If there's someone here who'd like to speak to that, please come to the podium and tell us what you would like us to consider.
State my name and, and, uh, organization. I'm Phil Cooper with Corwell Health and I am here to request a variance to the, parking ordinance. Um, we're looking to reduce from two units, which is what the current, uh, ordinance is down to one point five. Um, we're still believe we're being conservative with that request. Um, all of our studies have shown that we, on the current unit we have, have most of the times we survey, we're around eighty cars in our hundred and eighty, uh, parking stall, parking lot and, uh, the max we've seen is just over a hundred. So eighty spots usually sit empty at the worst time, usually fifty percent. So, um, we currently have the space to build more and would reserve that space, but don't believe we need to from a, from a tenant need perspective, so. I believe that the, uh, city is also looking at reducing that officially as well. I don't think timing worked out for us, so we're going for a variance, but, uh, I believe that in the process, at least the meeting minutes I looked at, the proposal was to go down to one point five as well. Uh, although I saw that, uh, it was even raised to go even lower potentially, so. I think this aligns with what you're studying currently, but we're a little bit ahead of where you're at there, so we're hoping to get a variance for this development.
All right. Questions for the applicant from the board? For, from the board for the applicant? All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll go ahead and open it for public comment. If there's anyone here would like to speak to this, please come forward and tell us what you would like us to consider.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, my name is Tom Steele. Um, we own property adjacent to the new project. And, um, we've not seen a, a plan or a diagram showing where this parking lot is going to be. Or, and how are you going to have egress and ingress and where it may, where it may affect the residents along Lake Shore or along Lake Shore Drive. Uh, we've not seen any plans to the building size or anything. Um, so I think it would be fair only to share that with us as residents of the area. Um, I'd like to know how many, uh, how many units are in the, in the buildings we presently have? Can anyone answer that? You know, how many units are presently, uh, in those three buildings? Okay, we've got ninety-two in there and you have, what, eighty spots did you say? Eighty parking, one eighty? Right. And so you're, you're, you're complying with the two units, uh, two, two parking lots per unit now. Right. Okay, um. If this plan was, uh, uh, directed to the, to the board when it was, and they had the previous meeting, why wasn't the number of parking spots in the drawings and illustrations that you were given to give it approval to be built in the first place?
Oh, this is the first time this has been in front of this board.
I mean, I know, but when this building was first approved to be built, it had, it must have had parking lots planned in the original drawings, right?
This is the first time this, this application has been in front of this board.
So you've never seen the, so you never saw the prints from the first, the first approval for this project?
So the three unit building to the south is a separate piece of property. The piece of property we're looking at was rezoned last year from our one eight.
I agree.
As the rezoning, they did not, they were not required to provide any drawings during the review process. We were looking at it and they did not have space for all of the required parking.
Right.
They're requesting a variance to decrease the number of parking spaces.
I, I understand.
For this one building.
I know, but if you're, if you're building a building and you don't present the number of parking places when it's presented to the city.
For the building permit review process, they did. It wasn't required as part of the rezoning. The rezoning process only looks at the piece of property and how the, the master plan to fix that area. The developer then goes in and they had a general idea and as they got their plans finalized. And like, um, Mr. Cooper said, the planning commission has also been looking at decreasing the required number of parking spaces for multiple family uses. So they also kind of thought that it would have gotten done before they applied for their building. So that's why they're now requesting especially, or a variance to decrease the number of parking spaces so they get a building.
Okay, but they're proposing what, um, hundred and twelve parking spots for the new building?
For the new building on this one piece of property that'll have fifty-six dwelling units.
Right.
So the code right now today says you need to have two parking spaces per dwelling. They are proposing one point five spaces per dwelling.
Okay, um, this ordinance is to prevent overcrowding, right? Isn't that why you have this ordinance? So that, so there's adequate parking for everyone in the unit? Isn't that why you have this ordinance that you have to have two parking spots? Okay, um, what are the other twenty-eight people going to do for parking? Who aren't going to be?
So as Mr. Cooper stated, based on their existing three unit building, they have never found where each of the ninety parkings, there's ninety units in the existing piece property to the south. They needed a hundred and eighty parking spaces. The hundred and eighty parking spaces have never been filled.
Does that mean a lot of people don't have two cars?
Correct. So they use that premise going forward that this use probably would generate the same amount of parking as the, as their existing property to the south. And that's why they're asking for a lower parking requirement. So they can maintain green space, um, limit the amount of impervious surface on the property.
And are you going to review that to when they, when they fill their, I mean, how, how are you, how are they going to verify this later on when it's crowded?
Well, if they have, if they don't have enough parking, they'll build more parking where there's some additional spaces, but they believe they're confident, confident that they won't require two spaces for each dwelling unit. Some of the units, according to the drawings that were in the packet that they submitted are efficiency units. And usually an efficiency unit only has one person living in it. And there's eight of those.
Do you know where these parking places are going to be?
On the site plan that was available for review.
We, we never saw a site plan.
Well, it was here, the legal notice says you can come into City Hall and look at it. So here's the site plan that shows where all the parking.
Did I get a copy of this or?
Yeah. So because of the zoning district they're located in, and because there's dwelling units to the north, residential units to the north, they have an increased size setback along the north lot line. They cannot park anything in that area. Parking cannot be there, dry aisles cannot be there, garbage cannot be there, so they've eliminated areas where parking could be on the property because of the required setback. Because it applies to dwelling units to the north.
How tall, is this a three-story building again?
The next page has an elevation.
Sir, if you want to take a minute to review that, we can get other, other people who have questions.
Copy, I'll, um, I'll, as long as you're not right on our lot line and I understand that you're, uh, you're not going to be parking on our property or the neighbors down, uh, down, uh, the highway, down the street, um, I gotta live with it. I, I know that, but, um, you don't talk to anyone. You don't show anybody anything. I didn't, I, I took, I didn't know this was available to see. And, and I still don't quite understand, um, how they don't need all their parking spots if, if they have fifty-six people in here. Most people in America have two cars. Most families do. Thank you. Here's your copy.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment?
So my name is Rita Franzick. I live a couple doors down from.
Excuse me, if we could, we need to be able to hear, please.
I live at thirty-three eleven Lake Shore Drive, so just a couple houses down from the new building. And, uh, just the only thing I would say is, um, I'm all about green space. I think it's great if they don't want to build over, but I did live in an apartment. My husband and I both had cars and we had company. People would come and visit us and so, I mean, it's always good to have those extra spots in case people have guests over, even if they're in efficiency. Assuming that they might have friends, it's nice to have a place for them to park. There is no extra parking in the area. There's no parking on Hawthorne and there's no parking on Lake Shore Drive unless your car breaks down. So the only overflow parking would be maybe the park across the street that could get pretty dangerous. It's forty-five miles an hour crossing it, but something you might want to take into consideration. There's really no extra place for parking to go. But again, I'm appreciative of not, you know, putting up parking where they don't need it. Of course, you don't want to. I'm all about nature and preserving it. So, yeah, just taking and putting the apartment buildings is took out a huge amount of nature in the area. So, um, but yeah, I would, I'm just concerned that visitors, that kind of thing, there's no place for them to ever go. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Nobody? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, I got a question for staff. If the variance, whether it gets approved or disapproved, what happens if the ordinance gets changed in the future? Are they bound to whatever the variance says?
No, since it, uh, there's a post-test amendment that the planning committee is acting on during their meeting and the legal notice holding the picture of this. The variance is to one and a half since the new rule would decrease you to below that and then you could provide, they would need to amend their site plan in the building permit filed. If they want less than that, they want to go with what the new requirements would be. It's my understanding, they'd like, they have a building permit here on file. They would like to start building. We cannot issue a building permit because there are not two parking spaces per dwelling unit on the site.
Gotcha, but if in the future they could revise that site plan to whatever the new requirement is.
Correct. As long as it met the requirements of the zoning ordinance regarding the placement of the park.
So in theory, this allows them to get under construction. However, it really doesn't matter one way or the other if the amendment goes through on the parking regulations. Thank you. All right, discussion of the board.
I, I believe the gentleman from Corwell said that they have extra space if they need to add parking spots. Did you not, sir?
I can respond. Yes, we have, we have, what, we have eighty that we almost never use.
So I guess what I'm saying is it seems to be a concern from the folks back there that, and this woman here, that this lady here, that if there becomes too crowded, you will have land to add parking spaces and you would respond as such.
We, we have enough land to build per the zoning ordinance, so we could build a hundred and fourteen spots if we wanted to. We just feel like we won't ever use that because from our previous, uh, apartments, we never use even close. We use about one point two seven, uh, spots and that's with the visitors and everybody, so.
Okay, but then it would be with the ordinance, with the, the, uh, appeal that Corwell is willing to add parking spaces if necessary. You won't use that land for anything else.
We're not committing to that in this, or this variance request, but we have, on our site plan, we have no, it's shown as not being utilized for anything else.
Okay, thanks. I think that'll make the neighbors happy.
I mean, like, it, it gives us more opportunity, more green space and nicer stuff, so I think it makes it better for the community, both our tenants and our neighbors, so. That's why we would prefer that because we're not using the parking, so.
Thank you.
But we definitely don't want them parking on their neighbor's lots, which is, I, I understand that concern and, you know, if we had to, we could build to make sure that doesn't happen.
Bet. I can.
Further discussion?
I'm not going to subject you to another parking discussion, Sean.
The only thing that gives me hesitation is the, it, it looks like the sampling period was October twenty-fourth to November second, which strikes me as not a particularly high time for residency in St. Joe. Whereas I ought to look for like July fourth, I'd be a little worried that during peak days you could have some substantially higher counts. So that's what makes me nervous around using this justification of, well, from that one week in the fall, we used over half. But we're confident that there will never be a peak where you're going to have cars spilling out into the surrounding area. Cause people get, definitely get creative when they run out of parking spots.
And, and the mix of, you have a different mix. You have, um, I think two and three bedroom apartments in the existing complex, right? And then this mix is different. You're going to have, uh, efficiencies or, uh, studios or, or one bedrooms. But I think it's impossible to nail that down. It, it, it's dynamic. It's going to change all the time. Some people are going to bike to work, right? Some people are going to take a bus. And people are going to have two cars when they, when there's only one resident.
And, and the city has done their own, through the review of the ordinance, the city has done their own observations. And the numbers for this facility are similar to what this showed. And I don't remember when that was done, but it was a different timeframe.
The dates that you listed are the dates that the city did their study. We've studied Europe. So the dates in your document, in the, uh, the, the document we submitted were the dates that you did your study. But we've, we study all Europe.
I appreciate that clarification. The thing that makes me less worried is how confident you see this going through anyway, through planning commission. I mean, we're going to drop to one and a half regardless.
Yeah, I mean, whether, no matter what the planning commission does, it's ultimately up to the city commission for final approval, but.
There was consensus on the planning mission level last one when we talked about decreasing it and actually originally started at one five and it ended up at one point two five based on the information that was provided looking at the several different large apartment complexes off of Lake Shore Drive and through the depth.
Which is your pleasure?
Say, one point five seems fine. I would be very uncomfortable with one point two five, but one point five seems to have vastly more than.
One point two five, is that the lower, that's a bigger variance request? So the variance.
Right.
Oh, okay.
You could do one point five or something more.
Okay, yeah.
And what, it depends on what gets passed ultimately is what Kristen's point was.
Yeah.
That they could refile.
Well, I'm just saying, speaking on terms of minimum change necessary, now apparently they couldn't have asked for less, but that's fine. I, I don't have a strong objection to one point five spaces. It, it seems larger than all the samples we've taken.
It would be nice if Corwell could reserve that space for a period of time. Reserve that space, don't build on it. And then at some point in time, release that back to you and say, okay, now you can, you're free to do whatever you want, whether we've proven over time that those, those additional spaces are not needed.
Yeah, for me, I think, I think they've proven over time that they, they've got all the existing park. Those eighty spots that aren't being used are already there. I mean, in, in reality, are they going to add additional parking to this parcel? When you still have eighty spots next door that aren't being used, I would struggle with that.
Yeah, it's a shame they can't connect the two, but I think that would be virtually.
Yeah, I mean, they are connected.
They can?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, I drove through there. I didn't see it.
So that.
Well, it's part of the new, it'll be part of the new development. It's shown on the site plan.
Yeah, so then they can always go to the other side, which has more spots.
Exactly.
Oh. Exactly.
This, this is the existing one and there's a drive right through here to connect to the. We didn't want them to have to get on, add to the Lake Shore Drive traffic essentially. So right behind the playground.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Yeah, I saw the playground. Okay. All right, well, that, that.
Anyone care to take a swing at the findings?
Sure, I'd love to.
Perfect.
Go ahead. Finding A is the variance would not be detrimental to adjacent property or surrounding neighborhood. Uh, I think we've shown that both the city and the applicant's analysis shows that the parking spots are likely to not be required. And there's already a precedent that the city planning commission is coming to a similar conclusion, so I think it's pretty likely that we're not. The, the two point O parking spots per unit is probably higher than it needs to be. Um, and that should prevent the detrimental effect of park, people not having a place to park. Variants, or, uh, finding B is the variance would not impair the intent or, or purpose of this ordinance. Um, again, I think the goal is to not have people parking not in spots, to not have a place to park. And I would say that this does everything it can to meet that. Finding C, exceptional or, uh, extraordinary circumstances to apply to this specific property. Um, I think having a next door property that shares a parking lot actually does do a long way of buffering this. Again, with more people, you're less likely to have, um, everyone decide that this is the day to have the most cars they'll ever have. So I think that's exceptional as well as the, the lot is capable of, um, fitting extra lots and there's some units that are already expected to be a low, low number of people, so. I think that would meet that criteria. Criteria D, the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property right. Um, I believe that's true, that building a structure, not having a ton of extra spots that are unnecessary, seems to be a, a reasonable right. Especially since this is about to be made into a general rule for the whole city, I think that would also, um, weigh in there. Uh, finding E, the condition or situation of this specific piece of property or intended use of said property for which this variance is sought is not so general or recurrent of nature as to make reasonable, practical the formulation of a general regulation for the condition of the situation. Yes, because we're, I don't know how you want to handle this one, Sean. I mean, it.
Yeah, I mean, it stands on its own in as much as, I mean, it's not every parcel in town you can put a multifamily parcel on regardless of what the, you know, the planning commission and ultimately the city commission decides.
All right. We're currently changing the rules, so it is a little interesting. Um, I think timing wise, yeah, it, it's currently not changed and this is a particularly large parcel. The condition or situation for this variance is not an action of the property owner. Um, other than just having an apartment complex, I think there, there's nothing specifically needed to cause this. Um, strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage, uh, density requirements would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose or be unnecessarily burdensome. And I think primarily the necessary burdensome would be a consideration there where it's having empty spots is, is not a requirement if they can show they don't need those spots. Uh, finding H, the variance requested is the minimum change necessary to mitigate the hardship. I think one and a half spots is more than enough that should buffer, especially with the other lot still being at two, um, spots per unit. The average is still pretty high. The average is still pretty high. And the variance will only relate to the property as subject to this application, and I believe that's true.
Discussion on the findings. Someone care to make a motion based on those findings?
I'll make a motion. I approve the domedal various requests submitted if the ZBA determines it's pertinent above to approve a various request for the property known as three, three, six, three, Lake Shore Drive from section eighteen point two point seven C, table eighteen dash one, parking standards. Multiple family dwellings of zoning ordinance to decrease to required onsite parking from two point O spaces per dwelling unit, one hundred and twelve spaces to one point five spaces per dwelling unit, eighty-four spaces, based on the application and site plan prepared by the applicant and included in the April tenth, twenty twenty-five zoning board of appeals, agenda, agenda packet and based on the draft findings as the requests meet the required standards under section one five point four point one zero of the zoning ordinance.
Do we have support for the motion?
Support or?
He was first. Discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Booter.
Yes.
Mr. Healy.
Yes.
Karen Eber.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for five hundred Main Street. Go ahead and open that public hearing. And if there's someone who would like to speak to that, please come forward.
Hey. Hello. Uh, my name is Shannon Kuchek and my, myself and my husband, who can't be here, are the new owners of five hundred main. And we are currently remodeling that into a hotel and a speakeasy lounge in the lower level. The reason I'm here today is for the patio. Um, we had put in a request for a patio of about thirty-five feet by eleven and a half, um, feet along the north side of the property. We are zoned D. Our neighbor to the west is zoned commercial. And so that's why we're here is because the D, we can go zero, we can, zero lot line. But the variance is that we're trying to respect our neighbor and their setback, which is fifteen feet. So that's why I'm here today. Um, we would like this patio on that side because on the west side, we're on the lot. There's, there's no opportunity there. On the east side, that's Main Street, which will be going through a big overhaul and is busy and unsafe for, and frankly, not a fun place to hang out, um, for some, you know, for guests, things. And then on the south side, we have a parking lot and that will be somewhat taken over by stairwell mechanicals and, um, accessibility things. And I don't think people would enjoy looking at parking lot and, um, cars either. And that would be probably pretty unsafe as well. Um, so our thought was that this was very much in line with the vision plan of St. Joe. And this is in something that's, what's it called? The State Street Downtown Core. And so is our neighbor. And in that plan, it specifically calls out that we are supposed to have our patios be, that we're supposed to leverage its positioning towards the lake and towards the main street in order to, let's say it said something like build engaging, um, places. And that's why everybody's redoing the downtown area with fire pits and walkways and things like that is the same goal that we have. That, that's our goal. There are not that many people in not many businesses that have an opportunity of a side lot. Most of the patios for the businesses are either on the sidewalk or sometimes in the roads. This is our land. We just want to put a patio on it. So the issue is, is that we are not in alignment with the, the setback for the neighbor. However, that property is vacant and has been for, I don't know, twenty, thirty more years and is largely used for storage. And in the very setback, the very fifteen feet that we're talking about, there's cars that's been asphalted over on their lot and they park on that fifteen feet. So we would like a patio in the same spot that we're trying to respect the fact that they have cars there, which is fine. That's their property. Now, if this is someone's house and they were living there and I would be worried about someone's use and enjoyment. But there's not been even precedence that anybody using the home to, to enjoy it. Or even, I don't know if it's even habitable. So we're here today because we feel like that's the best positioning. We feel like it's a great idea for St. Joe and we're trying to be consistent with the vision plan for St. Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for the applicant from the board?
Uh, have you considered? If the, so one of the things we look at is, is there a minimum change necessary? Is there less of a size of patio that would still give you the same effect you're looking for? Have you thought about like how? Why is zero foot setback the minimum versus five or ten?
Um, so there's eleven and a half feet there. Um, we did actually ask for a fence. We have to have a, a fence, a like see-through fence, three and a half feet or whatever's allowed. We, for accessibility, someone's going to have to, we have to make that the same type of space for anybody. They would have to be able to go around in a wheelchair and be able to get through an aisle or a side. That in itself is going to take up conservatively three feet. And to spin around, that's, they always go by sixty, was it five feet? So there's got to be a point where we can safely go on the patio with that. And I don't feel like six, to have like an aisle in the middle, I think it's just a more comfortable space for people versus being shoved up against the building. Um, because we will have to have that fenced in.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant from the board?
Well, we have this one letter here that says that there are possibly plans for a rooftop deck at five hundred main. Is there possible plans for that?
We've had to scale it down to about seven, the plan is now for seven hundred and forty square feet. And that is for our hotel guests only. It was, it's, or maybe, maybe in the future, like small events or something, but that is for hotel guests only and not for anybody who, that would be part of lounge and not everybody would like to be on a rooftop deck.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Can you speak to, uh, specifically the, so one of the criteria we have is hardship? So what do you see, view as the, um, property right that a patio is going to enable you to have?
Well, our use of enjoyment, we don't have a area that is safe for a patio except for that. And, um, I feel like a hard surface, by the way, is better than us putting like an around deck chairs on grassy area and that wouldn't be an accessible thing either. I think it's really, the hardship is to make sure we're servicing all of our guests equally and safely. And a brick paver patio is the safest of those options and the most accessible and um, it's not, I guess, the, the location of that is a hardship. The hardship is that that is the safest placement. That, did I answer your question?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you. Go ahead and open it up for couple, public comment. If there's someone who'd like to speak to this, please come forward and tell us what you'd like us to consider.
We did a drawing, just a, a drawing. Um, it's, it's very, 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 very. I mean, it's up in show brick pavers and antique brick pavers. But I did like a statue of what area of the park it was in.
Is that in the, in the, in like the?
Yes, yes, I think.
Can you, because we're on Zoom, we've got a.
My name is Joe, uh, Joe Ullery. Um, I was, until February, I was president of the Seron Lutheran Church, which is the neighbor to the south. And so we've been aware of some of the changes that have gone on. And mostly my questions are to try to inform everybody about what's going on in the church. So, um, I think our questions mostly are that, that we get from people in our congregation, you know, about, okay, what's going on next door? We have, uh, an easement as well, a parking easement with, um, with the library. That was from when the church owned the, that building from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen eighty-two, when it was sold to the architectural firm. So we have concerns, I think, sometimes about how busy this will get because of our parking easement, uh, shared use on Sunday, you know, depending on how things are going. And those have been most of our questions because we, we missed the hearing when it was zoning change. So when it went from business office, which was, uh, I think it's previous zoning last year to, to when it was rezoned, um, I think the church really wasn't made aware of what was going on. And so there was a lot of questions that followed that. I think it was some of our own, uh, problem that we didn't see the notice, didn't understand how fast things were happening. So I don't really want to put the burden on, on them. But I think now we're at a point where just kind of curiosity is like, okay, what's going on? So I think the hotel is well understood. The other pieces, uh, less so. So I was interested in getting the drawings to share with people. And then also like the scope of when it would be open, you know, it starts to sound like a bigger operation as some of these things happen. So that's the, the context.
Okay, thank you. And yes, the, the sketch was part of the packet that they can get you a copy. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name's Chris Leonard. I'm the owner of the building opposite side of the street. Uh, and my building and lot goes from the corner all the way to the alley. Uh, the library hotel occupies about two thirds directly opposite in my building than the small little house that, you know, has been vacant for a number of years is the, is the balance of it. Uh, I think this is a great opportunity, uh, you know, for the community, uh, to be able to refurbish that, um, library into a boutique hotel. Bring additional people into a town. I think this is a very simple and necessary request for, for a patio. And I think it'll certainly, um, improve my view. There used to be overgrown landscaping and not very well kept when John Allegretti was there. So I look forward to their moving forward and, uh, helping, uh, their customers have a place to go as well as improve the dynamics of the streetscape in terms of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, go ahead and close the public hearing and discussion of the board.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Where am I mistaken that a patio is at ground? Like, why do you need a variance for patio? I thought landscaping would not be considered in setbacks.
Uh, it is.
Patios and porches.
Three, three point nine point seven C three, no porch, any paved.
Paved, got it.
Or decked area.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's in the setback.
But it's, it's.
It's adjacent to a different.
Got it. Okay. I, I missed the point on it being paved, that that's the, what reclassifies it. Okay.
Correct. Like, like she stated, I mean, if it was a lawn area, you could put a round deck chair, your fire pit, whatever.
And pavers count as paved, which I did not catch. I would assume that didn't, right? If the grass goes through the pavers, does it count? I, same questions I have.
In Arizona, I'll answer, Marisoni ordinance, um, pervious pavers do count towards a hard surface. So we would count it as a.
So cement and pavers.
For those, those pervious favor birds that you can put in, those.
They're all the same.
Yeah.
Those sun drain better.
So I guess I have a few things to mention. Um, so in the application, the first thing is a clarify, uh, a clarification of the observations in the, uh, application made between the six sixteen Elm property and the five hundred Main Street property. And basically, um, when, uh, the property five hundred main was rezoned, sick, uh, six sixteen actually has become in a sense like a spot zoned area or a property, uh, surrounded by the D district. And because, because of that, uh, parking lot going behind. So it literally is an island. But ironically, um, the use in the, uh, which is in the C, uh, you know, commercial district, districts, COA district could seem to be, you know, perceived as having some favorable, favorable treatment. And you had mentioned some of that in terms of what's paved and what isn't. But, uh, and this is about ordinances. This isn't about opinion. Um, so this is working within the, uh, ordinances. The ordinance comparison, uh, between the two properties is one of, uh, access management standard. Uh, under the access management standard, which is inclusive of driveways and, uh, in a commercial, in a commercial district. And the other five hundred, uh, is an accessory uses and structure ordinance, which is inclusive of porches and, and decks. So it's really not an apples to apples comparison when you, when you look at it because the, uh, six sixteen, uh, paved area is really under the, um, zoning, uh, section three point two six point one point I, which is in, in the packet. And that states that, um, it's up to the, uh, city engineers discretion for width. And there is no maximum width for the non-residential or multifamily driveway, uh, accessing an alley. So that's a unique, that's a unique, um, you know, situation there. And in fact, the church, you know, just south of there, you can see it's paved up to the sidewalk and the, and the adjacent, you know, across the alley of the adjacent complex that has like three businesses in it is paved up to the alley or to the sidewalk as well. So, but you know, the five, the five hundred property is really explained on packet page twenty-seven, which is, uh, you know, section three point nine point seven, point C, point three, which is discussing, uh, a patio and porch, not a paved area. A drive, in a sense, a driveway. So they're two different things. And it is a little bit unfortunate, uh, that the rezoning, uh, you can't capitalize necessarily because it's been rezoned, five hundred, uh, Main Street has been rezoned, you can't capitalize on the zero degree or zero, um, foot setback, right? Because of the ordinance and the difference. And basically that, you know, the new zoning is being affected by the, uh, COA district in terms of determining the setbacks. So I would just wanted to clarify that in terms of, you know, ordinance comparisons to clear that up. The, the second thing is proving practical difficulty. Mark, you had kind of alluded to some of that. In light of the, the permit number three, the rooftop deck and permit number four, the speakeasy bar, the, the, the deck would really offer a beautiful unobstructed view of the lake and so forth. And I don't think there are really any compromises because you actually can view over top the six sixteen property and you're looking through the trees, between the trees, not through the trees. So it's literally unobstructed. So I don't see that as having any compromise there. But I am having trouble with the variance standards, B, C, D, G, and H. And a B being the fifteen foot to zero setback would impair the ordinance intent. I'm, I'm struggling with that. And then C, unique circumstances do exist since rezoning to D. I believe that, that there are unique circumstances, but do not preclude the intended use of the property. I think there's plenty of opportunity on that property to get a boutique hotel. Then D, zone D or district D properties can contract or contract public seating. You had mentioned that, people sitting on the sidewalks and so forth. But in fact, that's arranged through the business and the city, the public or the, the public seating is actually an agreement with the city on sitting on the right of ways. It, it doesn't really have anything to do with, you know, people's personal property. And then G, the compliance with density requirements does not prevent owner, the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Again, it's a, it, it can be permitted in zone, you know, in zone D as it is, to run the business. And then H is the variances are not the minimum changes necessary to mitigate the hardship. Mark, you had mentioned a little bit about that or inquired about that. And I'm wondering, you know, what the minimum is. That's my third point. Minimum, our job is to administrate and to also minimize or eliminate variances. So I'm, you know, we just, we just approved a bunch of ordinances on landscaping. And I'm wondering what kinds of opportunities you could think of that would utilize or execute some of those ordinances, working within, within the boundaries of the ordinances to create a, a living space in that area. And there are no restrictions on pathways, you know, in yards and so forth. So there are ways, creative ways to, I think there are creative ways that the hotel could get there in terms, in terms of creating an inviting space within the setback of fifteen feet, which is governed by the commercial district.
Could I ask a question? The setback today is not fifteen feet, right? It's eleven.
The building currently.
No, it's non-conforming.
It's non-conforming structure. So then they don't have fifteen feet to work with, right? They have eleven, nine inches.
Right, right.
So they're already behind the eight ball, right?
Right.
So to speak.
Right.
Other discussion?
I wanted to bring in the note we received from the six one six, which is in the packet. As far as I read it, they seemed largely approving, with the exception that they wanted the patio to end ten foot from the lot line. And it looks like the exit, the, the current plan is seven and a half foot. Can you confirm that? It's seven and a half foot from the lot line is when the. Okay. That's the required. Okay. So you're currently three foot off and they're looking for seven more. Okay. Which, we, we don't have to match that, I guess. It's just interesting to me, the, the most affected neighbor is not even necessarily against patio in general. It's, so to me, like, I'd be very sympathetic to the patio further from the property line. I'd be possibly okay with it just being as proposed. And part of my struggle is the patio is visible through. Like, when I think of zero foot setbacks, I'm thinking of somebody builds a property up that blocks your view and is right up against their house and it sticks out ten foot past. But this is arguably pretty transparent, see-through. The only thing that makes this not immediately approved is the fact that they're putting bricks under it. That's where I would really struggle with not approving it. And assuming we have in the language conditions that it remains. You.
Right.
I, with the awning.
We would say that unenclosed at all times.
Right. So when I look at like the effects of the nearby property, the fact that you could have everything they asked for, but they just couldn't have a brick floor, to me strikes me as this is pretty minimum. It's the, that's where I'm pretty sympathetic. Like, I would consider adding a restriction that they get away from the side property if I thought it helped, but it's three foot away as is and.
Right. And there's already an existing sidewalk there.
Right. Right.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, that's the second variance.
Right. The, the awning was included in the packet.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think I'm right there with Mark that I can fully support the proposal. Further discussion?
Yeah, I just, concerning the letter and concerning zoning, zoning goes with the property. And to me, all the more reason that that Greek revival house should remain, you know, a, I mean, it's a, I don't think just because it's been vacant, you take advantage of the property and, and, and/or the owner. I think, you know, there's plenty of potential in that eighteen sixties Greek revival house that gives it a lot of appeal, even though it's six hundred square feet. And it's got to be one of the oldest, you know, houses in the area. And it has a lot of history. So I wouldn't write it off as just, you know, subservient, subservient property.
I would say in regards to this patio, it's not going to be in the sightline of that house because that house is set so much further back. It was not as if they're obstructing. I don't see anybody renovate, adding to that house. Because that is an older house and so on and so forth. And it's kind of a different style. So this patio thing is not going to affect their being able to look to the left or to the right because it's so far back. And also, you'd be able to look straight down from Main Street all the way down to state because it's going to be open at all times.
Yeah, like finding A, I don't think the variance would be detrimental to the adjacent property.
Exactly.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yeah. I, I'm not considering it as a vacant property. I, I would consider it as a fully used property. I just don't see how the patio is going to affect them.
Right.
If they live there, the patio still isn't blocking visibility. It's, it's not building the structure out to their lot line.
And keep in mind, it's not zoned to be a residential property.
Right. Yeah, it's still resident. I'm sorry, it's still commercial.
Right.
Further discussion? Findings? I'll take a swing at the findings.
Yeah, so before you do that, so as far as the variances, there are two variances. Where, where, where do people stand on the awning? Where, what happened there?
Well, the awning goes with the, the awning goes with the request because the requesting, if you read it, it says we want the awning and the patio.
Correct.
So if we approve it, then we approve the awning.
Okay.
Isn't that right, Sean?
Mm-hmm.
And they do.
Yeah, and I, I just, I can support the awning. I mean, it's a, a, a four foot awning. I mean, the variance is there because the house is already, or the building's too close already.
Correct.
Right, right.
So finding A, the variance would not be detrimental to the adjacent property in the surrounding neighborhood. I don't believe it will be. The variance would not impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance. Again, I don't believe that this impairs the intent. If you look through the downtown district, there are a number of properties that have outdoor seating.
And have awnings.
And have awnings. Exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions apply to the property in question or for the intended use of the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zoning district and vicinity. Such circumstances shall create a practical difficulty because of unique circumstances or physical conditions such as narrowness, shallowness, exceptional shape or topography of the property involved or for the intended use of the property. Again, I think this is, again, the building is already encroaching into that side yard setback. The property is adjacent to a different zoning district. So I think that there are some exceptional circumstances. The variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right similar to that possessed by other properties in the same zoning district and in the vicinity. Again, being in the downtown district, there are numerous properties in the downtown districts with both outdoor seating and can, or canopy, what is it? Awning.
Tarp.
The condition or situation of the specific piece of property or of the intended use of said property for which variance is sought is not so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practical a formulation of a general regulation. I'm not aware of how many boutique hotels we have in town, but I don't think it's many. So I don't believe the zoning change or a ordinance change would be necessary. The condition or situation for which the variance is sought shall not be the result of actions of the property owner. Again, the building is already encroaching into the setback. And as explained, there are not many opportunities on the site for outdoor seating. Strict compliance with the area setback footage, height, bulk, or density requirements would reasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. I would argue that strict compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome. The variance requested is the minimum change necessary to mitigate the hardship. Again, we're trying to create an accessible patio. Those accessibility requirements means a certain amount of space. And I mean, we could argue one foot one way or the other, but I believe this is the minimum change necessary. And the variance will relate only to the property that is subject to the application, and I believe that. Discussion on findings?
I would add for exceptional, just that the existing structure is already non-performing, pushed against the setbacks pretty close.
And I think it's the only spot on that property that you could possibly have outdoor seating.
Yeah.
There's a little spot in the back, but that's just like one table, right?
Yeah. I also think the mixed legal status of the parking lot actually makes it harder to even consider other spots because they couldn't.
I agree.
They probably have a hard time touching the parking lot if the church owns it for good reason, but.
Should we put in there that the? Please.
Sorry, yes.
Should we put, should we, should we put in there that the on a patio and awning area is to always be unenclosed?
Yeah.
What?
It's in there.
It's in there.
Oh, thank you.
Further discussion on the findings? Someone like to make a motion based on those findings?
Right here. Yeah, I see it.
Why don't you read the?
You know, I read so fast, you know what I mean?
Motion. Why don't you read the motion now?
I'll read the motion now, now that I know it's always going to be unenclosed. All right, here we go. I vote to, I move to approve two variance requests from the property known as five hundred Main Street from section five point two, table five, five dash one footnote two D downtown district of the zoning ordinances. Two, one, decreased required secondary front building setback from fifteen feet to zero along the north lot line per section three point nine point seven, point C, point three. And two, to increase the allowable, the allowable projection of a self-supporting awning from five feet to seven point five feet along the north lot line. Self-supporting awning, self-supporting awning will be seven point five rather than ten feet and allow, we're calling it per section three, three point one zero B to allow thirty-five feet by eleven foot five patio included in the April tenth twenty twenty-five zoning board of appeals agenda packet. And based on the draft findings, as request meets required standards under section fifteen point four point ten of the zoning ordinance with the condition the patio remain open and unenclosed.
We have a motion. Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Further discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Just goes to show, every time I think I know nothing, I find out I don't know nothing.
All right, thank you.
I should have read it up.
Uh, do we have any old business? Any public comment? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make such a motion.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor say ahh.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Nice.
I gotta run.
I'll say you're close, right? You gotta run, huh? Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Good to be back.
Good to be back.
Were you on?
Where were you?
Nice. Oh, so you didn't miss.
What part?
Uh, Orlando.
Oh.
Nice.
Florida.